Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting of March 28th, 2005 of the Halton City Council is called to order. We want to begin by welcoming all of you here to the council meeting tonight. Not only those who are here in the audience, but those who are watching on HCTV. We're very pleased to have you join us as we deliberate and discuss the business of the city. First item tonight is the invocation and pledge of allegiance to be led by Councilmember Bill Lanford. If you will stand and join us for that, please.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, who you speak to us in silence, and we ask that you speak to us now. Speak to us about open minds and open our ears that we can hear, open our hearts that we might understand. Grant, Father, that we honor each other tonight as your children. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If you notice, we have one of our council members not with us tonight. Councilmember Dale Clark had surgery last week. He is home recuperating. We heard from him today. He's making good progress, and hopefully he'll be back for the next council meeting. Announcements and events. Our Public Information Officer Fran Burns has some announcements of interest to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. There's several things going on in the upcoming weeks, and I'm gonna go through them briefly. But I would like to tell you that you should be getting a newsletter in your mail that has most of the details in it. Those are mailed either Saturday or today, so everyone that has a water account should be getting a newsletter. Also, if you want to visit our website at www.haltoncitytx.com, all of this information is listed there as well. First off, the Texas Trash Office is Saturday, April 2nd. At 8:30, volunteers will meet at the parking lot in front of Kroger. T-shirts will be given to the first 25 volunteers, and this is a pickup of the Denton Highway. It's a litter pickup that we do every year. There's a free landfill day, continuing our cleanup efforts, on April the 9th at the CND Landfill. It starts at 6:00 a.m., it ends at 1:00 p.m., and folks can go there with a pickup load worth of materials to dispose of for free. The CND landfill is located at 4144 Dick Price Road in Fort Worth, and if you need information or directions, you can call me in my office. We have a dumpster day coming up on April the 23rd, and that's at the lot next to McDonald's, the empty lot that is owned by the Halton Estate, and they let us -- they're generous in letting us use that every year. Dumpster Day is another free opportunity to dispose of materials. And in addition to disposing of things that they don't take at the curb on a regular basis, such as construction material and brush, we're also gonna be recycling electronics. If you have an old computer, an old television, an old radio that you no longer have a use for, you can bring it that day and leave it with us, and we're working with a company that either reuses them as they are or takes them apart and recycles the elements. I wanted to tell you, too, that the Senior Center is offering ballroom dance classes on Wednesdays, every Wednesday from 1 until 3, and these are free. It's fun for everybody. And early voting will start for the May election, which is May 7th. It will start April the 20th, and that's going to be at the Recreation Center. So, again, all of this information is on our website and in the city newsletter. Also, there's a safety seat checkup put on by the Police Department. That's gonna be Wednesday, April the 6th, from 10 a.m. until 2 p.m. at the Christian Center of Fort Worth. That's the church on Northeast 28th Street that actually is in Halton City. And National Library Week takes place this year from April 10th through the 16th, and this is an open invitation for everyone to visit our wonderful Halton City Public Library. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have an announcement at this time.
Yeah, real quick. You may look up in the skies this week and going into this weekend and notice a lot more activity up there than usual. The Texas Thunder Air Show 2005 at the Naval Air Station is this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. It's free admission and open to the public. The Blue Angels will be there, a lot of performances by vintage aircraft, and just welcome anyone that wants to go out and see some pretty cool flying. Go out to Naval Air Station Base.
Any further announcements or events by members of the council or staff? Okay, we'll move then to reports. We have two reports we give each month. Mr. Muir, you want to introduce the first of these?
Sure. Normally, our Finance Director gives this, but our controller's gonna be here tonight. Joel couldn't be here tonight, so Charles Worrell is gonna brief the council on the monthly financial report for February 2005.
As of the end of February, 42% of the budget year had been completed. Within the General Fund, revenues totaled approximately 8.2 million, which represents 53% of all budgeted revenues in the General Fund. This positive budget variance is attributable to 90% of property tax revenue collected as a result of tax bills being due January 31st. Sales tax collections totaled approximately 1.6 million, representing 45% of the budgeted sales tax revenues. License and permits are only 16% of budget due to the slower-than-expected development in the KB Homes subdivision. Total charges for services are under budget by 9%, mainly due to the collection of only 9% of budgeted recreation revenue as a result of the Recreation Center renovation. Fines and fees collections are in line with budget at $429,431, or 45% of budget. Expenditures within the General Fund totaled approximately 6.2 million, which represents 41% of budgeted expenditures. Fund balance in the General Fund has increased over 2 million for a total of approximately 4.7 million, which represents 31% of budgeted expenditures. Our fund balance policy is currently 20%. Now, the fund balance in the General Fund will decrease as property tax collections are spent on budgeted operational needs. Within the Water and Sewer Fund, total Water and Sewer Fund revenues are approximately 5.1 million as of February 28th. This amount represents 38% of total budgeted revenues for the Water and Sewer Fund and is near expected levels when examined on a seasonally adjusted basis. Water and Sewer Fund operating expenses are 37% of budget as of February 28th. Within the Drainage Improvement Fund, total revenues for that fund are $455,247, representing 45% of total budgeted revenues. Revenues from customer billings comprise $445,412 of the year-to-date revenues. The Drainage Improvement Fund expenses totaled $776,874, which represents 30% of budgeted expenses. Now, these operational expenses will rise steadily once maintenance crews are in place. In the Debt Service Fund, through February 28th, total receipts are approximately 3.2 million. Collections from property taxes are approximately 2.3 million, representing 90% of the budgeted tax collections. And again, that's because the property taxes are due January 31st. Payments of principal and interest on debt amount to approximately 2.8 million, leaving $764,898 to be paid for debt service during the remainder of the fiscal year. The majority of debt service was paid on January 31st. Within the Street Reconstruction Fund, the Quarter-Cent Sales Tax dedicated to street improvements generated $394,108 as of the end of February. This amount represents 45% of budgeted sales tax collections. Now, the expenditures within the Street Reconstruction Fund are at 15% of budget, and that's due to a lot of the projects are -- there's no contracts for those projects, and they will be issued during the warmer months when we start doing the overlay projects. Within the Crime Control and Prevention District Fund, the CCPD is funded primarily by a Quarter-Cent Sales Tax, which totaled $335,898 as of the end of February. This total represents 46% of budgeted sales tax collections. Expenditures within this fund are 67% of total budgeted expenditures due to the debt service payment that was made January 31st. In the Economic Development Corporation Fund, revenues for this fund is derived from the Half-Cent Economic Development Sales Tax. Sales tax collections totaled $788,216 and represents 45% of budgeted revenues. Expenditures within the EDC Fund are at 23% of budget at $670,726. The majority of EDC funds spent during the year were expended for debt service payments that were paid January 31st. On page 12 lists the other funds that the city has, and those remaining funds are on target with nothing material to really note. On page 13, the sales tax charts begin, and I'd like to note that the total sales tax collections, this includes all funds, were $2,254,924, which is $129,072 more than was collected for the same period last year, so we hope that continues. On page 18, the investment reports start, and I'd like to just point out a few items. The average rate of return on the portfolio was 2.44% as of February 28th. The investments increased $5,932,486 to a total of $28,216,182, and this is mainly due to the issuance of $5 million in bond proceeds that were issued in February. During February, a CD was purchased in the amount of $100,000 that yields 3.45%, and a government security was purchased in the amount of $500,000 that yields 3.57%. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Worrell. Members of the council, you've had an opportunity for the last several days to look over the details of this information Mr. Worrell has presented, and we have just had a summarization of our status budget-wise for the month of February. Do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Worrell? Councilmember Sutton?
Just a real quick one, and actually for the city manager. In the Drainage Improvement Funds, it looks like we're increasingly seeing, exceeding our expectations in that fund. Would we have a mid-year adjustment in the budget to address where those extra funds that have been collected would go, or how they'd be allocated?
Yeah, Joel and I will be bringing forth something sometime in April.
Excellent.
About -- I don't know if we'll be addressing specifically that, but we'll be addressing all funds.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Holcomb?
I'd like to make a motion. We accept.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the February monthly financial. Councilmember Lanford?
Just for a second.
Councilmember Branson?
Just a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financial report for February 2005. Do we have any discussion on the motion? If you will register your vote, and it passes by unanimous vote of the council present. Item number two is the Capital Improvement Status Report. Mr. Muir?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council and citizens, we're gonna start off with streets as I normally do. Excuse me. Jerry Lane is -- we're talking about east of Halton Road, Two Riddle Lane. It's a $450,000 project that's been awarded to McClendon Construction. This is a CBG block grant project that the county will be administering. The county has recently formally awarded that, so the contract documents have been executed. We've got the pre-construction conference going on this week. Construction will probably start in about two weeks. Should be finished about 180 days later. Garland Street is substantially complete. This is over in the Business District, just south of McLean. Aurora Street, we just opened bids last week on it. I don't know what the bids came in at, but at the next council meeting, you will have an item on there to formally award that project. We're still reviewing them, but the projects take about seven months to complete. And Georgian, it's finished. I'm sure the people on Georgian are throwing a party, but the project is complete. I'd love to be able to say that about the Rec Center. I'm not sure I'll ever be able to say that about the Rec Center these days, but since we're talking about the Rec Center, if you were paying attention to Ms. Burns's comments, she was talking about early election starting April 20th, and it's gonna be at the Rec Center. And she did not misspeak. It will be at the Rec Center. The Rec Center will be complete to do that. Paving -- parking lot paving was finished late last week. Concrete's curing. It'll probably be striped later this week. We got a long list of punchless items that we're still gonna be dealing with, and we still got Jim Florida fixed, but we'll be probably doing a soft opening sometime in the next 10 days to two weeks. So, that's very positive. I wish I had something a little more definite, but I'm just scared to death to give a date still. But it's -- once you get in there, it's very impressive looking. I know some of you have been in there, but it's very impressive looking. Aside from that, the North Oaks Tank Painting Project started early. Contractor got out there a little early, so we're gonna start -- he's already started out there, so he'll be finished instead of in August. He should be finished in July. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Muir regarding the Capital Improvement Status Report? Okay, we don't need a motion to take any action on that one. We'll move then to the Consent Agenda consisting of items number three and four. These are the minutes, as well as an inter-local agreement for action, consideration action on the 2005 Justice Assistant Grant. The Consent Agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. That would authorize the city manager to implement these items in accordance with the action taken by the council. So, members of the council, I'm ready for a motion at this time regarding the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Holcomb?
A motion to accept.
Councilmember Branson?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Councilmember Sutton?
Just for a second, Mayor.
Okay, if you will register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. We move then to item number five, which is a public hearing. Here to introduce that, our Director of Planning, Mr. James Pliska.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, citizens of Halton City. This item is conditional use, the third one for 2005, and it's consideration and action on a public hearing for a conditional use permit with site plan approval for Ms. Deborah Bungavong to allow for an auto mechanics facility in the M1 Industrial Zoning District on tract 18B7 of the J. Walker survey, abstract 1654, and it's located on the east side of Layton Avenue, locally known to us as 1714 Layton. As stated previously, the site is zone M1 and does not allow for conditional use permit or for auto repair facility without a conditional use permit with site plan approval. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow this use on the site. And tonight, we're emphasizing the site plan approval process, 'cause in your packet tonight, you have two site plans. The first site plan, which was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning after a meeting on February 22nd, 2005, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to deny this conditional use permit with site plan approval for an auto mechanic shop. The site plan presented did not reference the highest and best use for the site, as explained by the applicant and indicated by the enclosed site plan in your packet. The submitted plan, like I said, indicated vehicle parking and maneuvering problems. On the old site plan, it was presented before P&amp;Z. It was a hand-drawn type instrument, was not according to scale, indicated certain situations with the plan, examples tandem parking, which is not allowed by the ordinance, and then some potential circulation problems. With this denial, however, the applicant has gone to professional address man and surveyor and has since then submitted a more precise site plan indicating sufficient parking for this type of use and indicating one of the concerns of the Planning and Zoning was a haydite wall which limited ingress and egress. With this site plan, the applicant is indicating that that wall is to be removed. So, I'll stand and answer any questions over any of those issues as brought about by Planning and Zoning.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, members of the council, do you have questions or comments for Mr. Pliska regarding the presentation he just made on this issue? First of all, Councilmember Lanford, and then Councilmember Branson.
Mr. Pliska, correct me if I'm wrong, but was the vote in the P&amp;Z, were all of the members opposed to this approval of this site plan?
Yes. Councilmember Lanford, it was unanimous vote.
Would it be appropriate to -- for us to consider, would it not be appropriate for us to consider sending this back to the Planning and Zoning and let them have a look at this revised site plan so that they can -- I mean, I don't know that that would change their mind, but it certainly would -- seems that it's answered several questions that they had, and I'm kind of leaning that way. What is that?
Yes, I would feel that that would be very appropriate. Again, they were given a hand-drawn type instrument. It had a few problems with it, with this new instrument.
I remember those.
Right. And we are cracking down on that as we have more and more properties that we need to address these type of issues with the fact that we're approaching build-out and redevelopment. We have tightened up on these site plan issuments of these type of instruments, and therefore so has Planning and Zoning. So, that was the major decision in this, was the tool that was submitted by the applicant and their explanation of what was going to take place at the site.
Thank you.
So, yes, with this new instrument, as you can see, it very clearly delineates the site much better and indicates the activity on the site. And one of the issues that we have to address with the zoning ordinance is congestion on the streets, and that, unfortunately, that first submittal did not indicate that.
Well, I'm inclined to do just that and let that body give us advice based on this latest information rather than the prior one. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. If this goes back to the P&amp;Z, will there be a re-notification process for the surrounding properties?
In this type of instrument, yes, we would feel like it would be necessary, and again, it would present no problem to staff. We already have it in the GIS program, so it'd be just a matter of resubmitting the notices, and I would feel comfortable doing that.
And did you receive any response for the first one from the surrounding areas?
I believe there was no activity on that. I believe we did not receive any indicating yea or nay on the issue.
Okay, I'm inclined, believe like Councilmember Lanford, that this needs to go back to the P&amp;Z for reconsideration.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, do we have any other members of the council who wish to ask questions or make a comment at this point? Okay, there being none, I'll open the public hearing at this time, where members of the audience will have an opportunity to speak either for or against the application for this conditional use permit with site approval that has been submitted. I believe the applicant is here. Ms. Bungavong, would you like to address the council or just be available if there are questions by the council?
I will be able to answer any questions.
Okay, members of the council, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time? If you would, would you come to the podium, please, so we can hear you? Thank you. Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Ms. Bungavong, for appearing today. Appreciate that. Would this cause any hardship if we -- to what your plans are for us to send this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time?
None whatsoever. In fact, I approve that, too, because the first site plan I put in, it was horrible. Because I was like, it's the first one I've ever had to do, and it was very hard to find someone to do it. And I found someone to do it, and he didn't know what he was doing, and of course, I didn't know any better. I put it in. This time, I went to a professional, I got it done right, and I think it might be better if they did take a look at it to be able to see, you know, okay, this is what I meant, you know? Because that one was just kind of like a mix of what the building is now and what we're going to do, and I wasn't really sure which way to go with it.
Sure.
This one is exactly what we needed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's all.
Anything you want to say before you go back to your seat? Ms. -- okay.
Um, no.
Okay.
But thank you. Thank you all.
Members of the audience, anyone wishing to speak either for or against, since this is a public hearing, this application. Mr. Tipton, if you will, come to the podium, and I didn't ask you, Ms. Bungavong, to give your name and address, but I think we have it. Mr. Tipton, I need --
Yes.
I need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jim Tipton. I live at 3248 Earl Drive. Wanted to let the council know that I know these people. They have done some auto repair for me on the same vehicle twice in the same location on my automobiles, and it was about $2,000 worth each time. They're very efficient, proficient people. I would recommend that anyone take their automobile there for repairs, and hopefully that this will be approved and they will have a very nice place in order to serve the citizens of Halton City.
Okay. Anyone else like to address the council at this time? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'm ready for a motion regarding item number five. Councilmember Sutton, and then Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that we refer ordinance number O-2005-009-15 back to the Planning and Zoning Committee to reassess the changes that have been made in this ordinance, or in this -- yes, in this ordinance.
Councilmember Reese?
That would be a first second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second before us. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, if you'll register your vote, we will display it at this time, and that, too, passes by unanimous vote of the council. We'll move now to item number six. Mr. Pliska, I believe this is an item of yours as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, citizens of Halton City, this indeed is an item of interest. It is a new one for the zoning department, as well as for the planning and zoning. Massage therapy is not a permitted use in the city's zoning ordinance. Therefore, Mr. John Martin, who is located on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Wallace subdivision, or locally known as 4909 Airport Freeway, is asking for a zoning classification with site plan approval for a therapeutic massage facility and sale of related massage products on the site. As this was not a permitted use in the zoning ordinance, staff took it to the Planning and Zoning, basically, following the city's zoning ordinance procedures for new types of land uses. And according to the ordinance, basically speaking, these, the planning and zoning was to consider this type of use and place it in a classification category rather than creating a permitted use and therefore having uses associated in that district. At their meeting, they decided they would more or less make this as an accessory use for a chiropractic clinic, which is a permitted use in the zoning matrix. However, we feel that this solution, or the planning and zoning results that were sent to you, is not a proper solution for this item and leaves the applicant out there basically hanging because it's not a truly primary or permitted use. So, after discussions with Mr. Olson of our legal department, we've determined that we really need to present this to you in ordinance fashion and therefore bring in massage therapy as a permitted use in the zoning matrix, but also have a very massage therapy as a permitted use in the zoning matrix, but also have a very descriptive definition of massage therapy in the zoning ordinance in order to not create an umbrella for any potential SOB or sexually oriented business that might try to come in under that umbrella.
Okay, since this is a public hearing, before I open it, members of the council, do you have any questions for Mr. Plisca regarding the presentation he just made? Councilmember Sutton?
Just real briefly, just to maybe sum it up, then, our current ordinance is not descriptive enough to cover this type of business as it stands right now.
That is correct. Massage therapy, or massage itself, is not listed as a permitted use in the city's zoning ordinance matrix. And it was there for a reason, and that it was to not allow those type of SOBs into the city under that umbrella. However, massage therapy is listed in our occupational licenses within the city's codes, and we do need to find a way to provide this service within the city as a permitted use in the zoning matrix.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything further for Mr. Plisca? Okay, since this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Do we have any member of the audience who wishes to address the council, to speak either for or against this item as it's presented? Okay, Mr. Grzan, if you will, give us your name and address for the record.
My name's James Grzan, 6208 Little Fossil Road. You know, I guess that there's a lot of sexual acts that come under doctor's care. I guess there's a lot of different things, but you know, at the school for the blind that I attended, one of the things they taught down there was the art of massage, and it was always taught as a therapeutic type work that helps many people, and I've never been to a chiropractor yet that didn't massage a muscle before he went to cracking my arms and stuff. So, you know, I understand this fine line, but I believe that they put it where it belongs. I believe that, you know, we can take anything and make it illegal, don't, you know, it's not against the law to have a drink, it's against the law to get drunk and drive, and you know, you don't have to do both of those. You can do one or the other, but if one leads to the other, and I think that's what you're looking at here, that, yeah, this could open the door to a sexual oriented business. It certainly could. That doesn't mean it's going to have to, and that doesn't mean that the council has any business policing it. I think that we, you know, that this should be considered, and I think that you're accusing a lot of people that are good massage therapists if you don't consider them to be part of the chiropractic care.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grzan. Anyone else? Mr. Plisca, do you have anything you want to add in view of the comment that was just made? Would you address the issue of the accessory? If a chiropractor had an office there, and they did the massage in connection with that, would that be permitted under our current matrix? Is it the fact that there is no chiropractor there, and the way this was presented indicates it's an accessory to a chiropractor, and a chiropractor's not even on-site?
That's a very good explanation, Mayor, and yes, that is, that is the issue. Each facility or each use is considered a primary use with its subsequent associate or accessory uses. So yes, it would be common, and you would find that at most chiropractic clinics, in which the doctor itself would issue that therapy as a rehab-type mechanism in order to accomplish his wellness program for that patient. So yes, it would be an accessory use for a chiropractic clinic, or the therapist to be associated with that clinic, so to speak. However, this therapist, it would be a primary facility or a primary use, and the ordinance does not address it as it is.
Any, anyone else have any comments regarding what he's just stated? Ms. Conley, I think you had indicated you'd like to address the council during this portion of the public hearing. And again, for the benefit of those in the audience and those who are watching on TV, if you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patricia Conley, I live at 3913 Kirby Street, Holton City, Texas. I would like to address, you guys are, there's got to be something put in there, because it is recognized as a state, you have to have a state license to do this massage therapy. If you go by that and not go by a sexual massage therapist place, you could find all kinds of ways if you find out from the massage therapy people down in Austin, Texas, that they have to go down and take their tests and stuff. It's not, you have to be able to, be able to charge for it, you have to have a license. And this is a lot different than going out and doing a sexual thing on that. So they do need to look into it and get it separated from the other so you can do that. And I'm sure if you call them or ask them down in Austin, they will give you the criteria for it and everything so you can come up with it.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Councilmember Hutchison?
Mr. Plisca, I need to ask this question because I'm a little confused, perhaps. The therapeutic solutions letter that was submitted along with this, this application here lists a whole bunch of retail products that go along with the massage therapy, and I'm wondering if that has to be written into the ordinance specifically, the kinds of care products too, because it sounds to me like they're going to sell these products at the same time as doing the therapy. And I realize about the licenses for the therapist, but it sounds to me like they're going to sell skincare products or skin, or these products, these body creams, lotions and whatnot, it's listed in this letter here, and it would seem to me that there are more than just, some lotions and care products and so on and so forth, or may fall outside the certified limits of what a massage therapist usually uses. And so it would seem to me that that would need to be a part of the ordinance too, since that's what we're addressing here.
That is a very good point, particularly since we need to kick this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and as legal has decided that we need to do this in an ordinance format by amending the city's zoning ordinance, yes, you would want to clearly define any type of product of that nature, and the definition aspect of that amendment could fall into that category.
Mr. Olson, is there anything you need to say tonight on the subject?
I'll just say, Mayor, that we will look at all of these issues that have been brought forward tonight when this goes back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we will have the Planning and Zoning Commission address that in the form of recommended amendment to the ordinance.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this subject? Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. As I understand it, Mr. Plisca, amending the ordinance to further define what type of businesses or that we would allow within Holton City would be consistent with protecting the community, but also consistent with what a member of this community did quite a few years back in opposing the establishment of sexual oriented businesses in the community. I believe someone's here that actually was a part of that effort years ago in Holton City.
Yes, there will be two facets of the ordinance, of course, that you want to look at, the matrix of permitted uses within the zoning ordinance, as well as a clear definition of massage therapy in the ordinance, to clarify and completely define this type of use for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, there being no one further from the audience wishing to address the council at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move now to a motion regarding the wish of the council regarding item number six. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move that we take CC-002-05 and send it back to Planning and Zoning for clarification on an ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Holcomb?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If you will register your vote, I will display it, and it passes by unanimous vote of the council. Item number seven, we're going to take out of turn in just a moment. We have a few more items on the agenda, should not take us long to address those, and then we'll come back to item number seven. We move now to the Vista Citizens Forum. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to have an opportunity to speak to the council. We have a number of speakers' request cards filled out and that have been handed to the city secretary. All comments made during this portion of the meeting must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than to an individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form, and they must refrain from personal attacks against any individual. A six-minute time limit with prior notification will be granted, and three minutes without prior notification. If someone wishes to address the council during this time period, have not filled out a yellow card, three minutes will be granted. Council cannot take any formal action, they cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time because it has not been posted in accordance with the open meetings law. Our first speaker tonight, Mr. Grzan, James Grzan, who wishes to speak on the subject of ordinances and policies.
James Grzan, 6208 Little Fossil Road. Basically, I'm quite concerned, the fact that I've come up several times and talked about our policies and how they're not written, but there's several things that come to matter, and I was kind of hoping that our new council would address them, and it just really hasn't quite happened. I don't wish to criticize, or complain, or condemn any one person. I just think that in passing around, I haven't done much work in the last year or so, but in working in the city of Arlington, you go down a road and there's some empty land, or there's a place for sale, and there's a sign over there that says, "This land is zoned such and such, you may want to check with the city of Arlington before purchasing." If we're going to have land that has, I attended a meeting here where everybody swore a ton of oath, and they got up and swore that there was no dual-zoned land in Holton City. Here the other night at a city council meeting, we talked about a piece of property that had dual zoning on the same piece of property. So what's our policy? Where's it at? What do we expect? And, you know, if we have a thought in mind, let's kind of make it a policy and put it out for everybody to see it. And yeah, I believe that probably if you're going to buy a piece of land today, I realize that you better go check with the city. But I didn't realize that a few years ago. I've done several projects in Grapevine and Fort Worth and stuff, and we'd go get the zoning, we knew it was allowed under that zoning, and went forward. We just didn't have these problems. And here lately, all I see is problems. We've passed a water, a drainage program that was very necessary, and, but you know, several people have called City Hall, and when they've, I know several people are getting charged for two acres of paved surface. They contacted a gentleman with code enforcement who told him, "Well, if you park on it, that's considered paved surface, whether it's gravel or not." I don't believe that's what this council intended. Where did this policy come from? But who do you speak to about the drainage? No one's been appointed to be the overseer. That's kind of what I'm wondering about, is that I see things that are going on and on and on, and they don't seem to, we don't seem to put something in place to stop it. We don't seem to say, "Here's our policy," and everyone knows that there's going to have to be some exceptions, certainly, but I just do believe that the council could put, one of the things I liked, that I was kind of hoping the mayor might react, was the mayor's hotline, and I'm kind of hoping that that would be reinstated, and some other things like that. Council has a good, positive attitude, and I'm hoping that a lot of these little issues that come up as policies will be written, and so people understand where they're at and what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grzan. Our next speaker, Ms. Pat Conley. Ms. Conley wishes to speak to us on the subject of common sense.
Patricia Conley, 3913 Kirby Street, Holton City, Texas. I've been sitting here listening since November to different people get up here and say things to you, and, you know, some of the common sense that, you know, you can't talk about it, you can't say anything about it and everything, that's fine, but, you know, could you possibly talk to somebody in the council, you know, say, "Hey, you know, this person might have a good idea. This man that just got up, he has some good ideas, but nobody knows what to do about them." So just start using a little common sense and think about things that you're wanting to do for this city. This city needs help, it really does, and it does not need somebody saying, "Oh, we can't do this, oh, we can't do that." We need people with positive common sense that can get things done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. I believe that's all of the speakers' request cards we have filled out. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council at this time? Mr. Wyatt, you have, since a speaker's request card was not filled out, you have three minutes. If you will, give us your name and address for the record, please, and tell us to begin with the subject matter, please.
All right, I just want to speak a few words about Spring Fest, Jimbo Wyatt, 5016 Ira Street, and I would just like to thank Fran Burns and the Beautification Board, and the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and everybody else on the city staff that made Spring Fest an excellent time for everybody this year, and on behalf of the citizens, I'd just like to thank the staff for that. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Okay, there being no others who wish to address the council at this time, we move now to the boards and commissions. We have a resignation, I believe, to be recommended for ratification. Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. It's with regret that Dewey Markham, a longtime member of the community, has submitted his resignation on the EDC, and we need to go ahead and ratify his resignation.
Okay, a request for ratification for the resignation of Dewey Markham from the EDC. If you will, display your, register your vote at this time, and that ratification passes by unanimous vote of the council. Councilmember Sutton, while you have the mic, I believe you have, as mayor pro tem, a recommendation... a recommendation to present to the council at this time for an appointment to the Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, filling a space like Dewey Markham has put in this community with his long-term involvement and history with Altum City is no easy task. But I do have a recommendation. A person that's been involved in the community for some time and had, has demonstrated that he loves this community and wants to be a part of improving it. I'd like to submit the name of Greg Van Newnus for a recommendation for the EDC.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the Mayor Pro Tem regarding the appointment to the Economic Development Corporation. If you will, register your desire regarding that appointment. And that passes by unanimous vote. Councilmember Holcomb, I believe you have an appointment.
Yes, sir. I recently spoke with Mr. Wayne Iverson, and I would like to move him from alternate to place two on P and Z.
Okay, recommendation to move Wayne Iverson from alternate to place two on planning and zoning. If you will, register your vote regarding ratification. And that is a unanimous vote. I have a recommendation of Mike Stewart to fill an alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm requesting ratification for that appointment, please. And that passes by unanimous vote. Item number 10 is attendance requirements. I mentioned earlier that Councilmember Dale Clark is out tonight because of having surgery. I need a motion from the council and action taken regarding excusing his absence tonight. Councilmember Hutchison?
Yeah, I make a motion that Dale Clark's, after considerable contemplation, make a motion that his absence be excused after surgery.
Councilmember Lanford?
That's a second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Clark's absence. If you will, register your vote. And that passes by unanimous vote. We move back now to item number seven. This item is a paving lien consideration and our action regarding paving lien on 2613 Weaver and 2723 Weaver. This is listed on the agenda as a public hearing. And even though it isn't technically a public hearing, we'll treat it as a public hearing in allowing any member of the audience who wishes to address this at the appropriate time to do so without having to fill out one of the yellow cards. However, there are some legal issues involved here that the council needs to consult with the attorney as authorized under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. But before we adjourn, or before we move to executive session with regard to the questions, the legal questions regarding that, I do want to go ahead and, first of all, have this matter introduced by Mr. Muir or someone on his staff, and then to give Mr. Haskins an opportunity, if he'd like, to address the council before we move into executive session. And once we have an opportunity to get some legal questions answered by the attorney, any action taken by the council, we would, of course, come back out, out front to do that. So, Mr. Muir, having said all of that, will you introduce this item for us, please?
Sure. Mayor and council, as the mayor stated in the, reading the agenda, this is concerning the properties on 2613 Weaver and 2723 Weaver. These are two adjoining properties that are on the west side of Weaver, just south of In the street assessment program that has been operating for many years, was abolished a few years ago. The issue at hand is the, Mr. Haskin, or President of Makers Company, dedicated some right-of-way along that line, specifically for 2723 Weaver. He dedicated 10 feet of right-of-way back when he platted the property back in 1990. At 2613 Weaver was platted, and at 97, he again dedicated right-of-way during that plating process. In doing the street assessment for the Weaver project, which was done in the late 90s, the staff worked with the property owners along Weaver and offered, instead of, in exchange for donating of their right-of-way, they offered to waive the street assessment. This was not offered to Mr. Haskin because the city apparently already had the, had the right-of-way, so that was not offered to him, and, but other people on the, on the street were. And keep in mind, Mr. Haskin was not treated any differently than any other property owner that had already donated right-of-way. That this, he was treated the same. The implications of that action, although concerning, and I'm not here to debate whether it's right or wrong, it's, Mr. Haskin has had several meetings with me and the staff, previous city managers, to discuss this issue. I've, I'm at a point where I'm not sure what a resolution is. And Mr. Haskin, I'm sure, is wanting to, to talk to the council here as far as waiving the lien, changing the lien of some sort. Part of the reasons I struggle with it is I certainly see his point. That's something I struggle with, but I don't, I don't know what the resolution is. When, when the property, when the street assessment was approved by the council back in August of 98, total assessment was for $24,046.19. Since that time, that's when it was approved. Now, the, the street assessment did not commence until the improvements were approved by the council, and that was approved in November of 1999. That's when the assessment became, I guess, put into effect or, or collectible. Should be noted, a short time after that, in January of 2000, the street assessment program was abolished. But since that time, no payments have been made on the assessment. Interest is accrued to the tune of $5,818.80, leaving a total amount due of $29,864.99. I'm not sure, Greg, if I missed anything, or if, if, if you'd like to, in talking with Mr. Haskin, we've had several heartfelt conversations. He, he wants to address this council. He wanted to have some dialogue with the council. That's why the agenda item, as phrased as it is, instead of in visitors' forum, to allow him that opportunity. And I'm not, Greg, I'm not sure, are you, are you wanting, still wanting to address them? Why don't you go ahead and start making your way up? And if I've misstated something, by all means, straight, straight me out, but I think I've gotten it, I've given you a very short, brief picture, and I'm sure Greg will, Greg will add to it.
Well, I'll try to keep the long story to a short one also. If I could get you to give us your name and address for the record, and your relationship to this property, please, just to, so everybody in the audience and those who are watching know who you are and why you're here.
My name's Greg Haskin. I live at 304 Havenwood Lane North in Fort Worth. I am the President of Makers Company Incorporated, to family-owned business. I represent my family here tonight. My parents own the property at 2723 Weaver Street. My sister and I own the property at 2613 Weaver Street. A lot has been explained by Mr. Muir. One of the things that, over the course of all of this, we've been in Altum City since 1973, and as the city manager explained, at the time that we were plating the first property, working with the city, we were requested to donate 10 foot of the property for the future construction of Weaver Street. We did so willingly. Later on, in plating the 2613 property, again, we were asked to dedicate 10 foot of the property. There are, I believe, 33 different landowners on Weaver Street that were affected by this. 28 of those also had dedicated, and the city waived their assessment, 28 of the 33. Five of the property owners were assessed. Two of those were myself, the two different properties that we've discussed. Basically, about 712 linear feet of Weaver Street is our frontage, and the total assessment of the street, 40,000 original assessment, we were say 60% of the total assessment of all property owners on the street. And we basically did exactly the same thing that was asked of the other 28 landowners. We dedicated, basically in our case, 7120 square feet of our property with no, no cash value, no reimbursement, reimbursements for anything. So what I'm asking basically is to basically be treated in the same sense as the property owners that are across the street from me. We have been a place of business. We have, over the five years, averaged close to 45 to 50 employees. The property owner across the street is, is basically over these years has been an empty lot. So we've been a taxpayer there, employer in the city for coming on 32 years, and we feel like, thing you said, I guess, putting it in fair play, I guess, I'm asking for the council's assistance to reverse these assessments on, on the, the street. As I say, there's a long story about during construction and all the fun things that went on. Weaver Street was an interesting project, but I don't think I want to go into all the details of all the things during construction. But I would appreciate y'all's open-mindedness to put this on a fair, scale, balance for us. And thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes, if you don't mind, remain at the podium for just a moment. Councilmember Lanford?
Mr. Haskin, appreciate your presentation. The only thing different I heard about your presentation and Mr. Muir's was, his assessment was that you were treated exactly like everybody else was, and your assessment is that you're treated differently than everyone. Can you clarify in what way you feel you were treated differently?
The only thing that I said differently was that, from the records that I have, there are 33 property owners. 28, at the time the city was preparing for construction, asked property owners to donate 10 feet. There were five others. My property represents two of them. So there were three other property owners that were assessed. I do not know the details of, of their reason for it. So there were three other property owners. I don't know if they didn't have to donate any frontage, or I do not know the circumstances of the three other property owners.
Let me, let me clarify, Bill. What, what I was talking about in my statement is that other entities or individuals that had property along the road, not just there, really anywhere, if they had already platted and the city already had the right-of-way, I've not found where that right-of-way was given in consideration of the street assessment. It's typically unplatted property that we, if the city did not have right-of-way, they used, they used the exchange of the assessment for the right-of-way. If the city already had the right-of-way, like is in the case of Mr. Haskin, that, that consideration was not offered.
Right, okay.
And in that case, in that case, he was treated the same as other people that had already platted or had already dedicated right-of-way to us. He was treated the same as everybody else that has donated right-of-way.
Okay. And you, do you agree with that? I mean, that you were treated like everybody else who had already platted?
Exactly the way you described it.
Okay, nice. Thank you.
Any other members of the council wish to ask Mr. Haskins a question or make comments regarding the issue before us? Okay, Mr. Haskins, thank you. I will give you an opportunity, as the evening unfolds, to come back up and address the council if, if you desire, or if we say something in the course of our discussion. So if you want to go ahead and be seated, we'll, we'll, we'll move forward then.
Thank you very much.
Okay, since this is being treated like a public hearing, before the council moves into executive session, is authorized by law to ask the attorney specific legal questions regarding the complexities of this issue, do we have anyone who wishes to address the Mr. Grzan?
James Grzan, 6208 Little Fossil. I know that several of the members of the council weren't here back in those days. I know Mr. Muir wasn't here. Most of the cities charged to redo a road, the people on each side of it. Several people paid these fees. The quarter cent sales tax that was discussed at this council meeting several meetings back, where a gentleman got up and said, "Well, now, this money for drainage is not going to be put in the general fund, is it?" Well, you know, the thing about that, that's what that quarter cent at that time was told to the people that it would do. It would pay for the streets. There'd be no more assessment to people. Mr. Muir wasn't here back in those days, and, well, that's the way I heard it. And I'm not gonna say that it's exactly right, but that was part of it. But it was to boost the streets and to do a lot of things, not to become the street budget. That was never discussed that I know of. It has become part of the street budget. But this is a gentleman that donated to the city willingly. Other people that did not donate to the city got paid for their property. Now, they also had to pay for the street improvement, maybe, depending upon the time it was done. But you're gonna find a lot of this took place, and I think that that's part of what that budget's for, is to tend to things like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grzan. Anyone else? Mr. Iverson? And we do need your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wayne Iverson, 3033 Halton Road. I just kind of stopped by here tonight, and I guess I'm kind of glad I did. First of all, I, I feel sorry for the gentleman here with the assessment on Weaver Street, but I work, I know an owner on Solana Street that has a business, and he had a little two-lane road, and the city came in and paved it concrete, and assessed him about $60,000 for the total of that, and he gave quite a bit of land to the city to take care of all this and everything. And he sat, him and his wife sat in those two chairs right there, and the city said, "No." At that time, I happened to be on the council, and I abstained from that. The only thing I'm concerned about is, is you're gonna open up a can of worms here. Because I was on the council when this was just, we, we did away, we were still assessment, then we did away with. And I feel, I understand the gentleman where he's coming from, but there was a lot of people at this time who was assessed a tremendous amount of money for street improvements. Now, when we did the old Glenview Drive in front of the Kizbit or whatever, that gentleman was, was assessed a ton of money, and came before us and begged us to say he was gonna go out of business. And we did not give him any lenient or anything. Okay, so I'm just a little concerned here that we might be opening up something down the road, you know, from assessments. I don't know the story, and I might be talking out of turn here, but seeing that, because I was the big advocate of doing away with it. We shouldn't have had it, and it didn't happen, and at this time, you know, this- And at this time, you know, this was kind of the gray area where we, we were doing this, we felt sorry for the people because it was going, but that was the rule that we had at that time. So I'm just, just a little bit concerned, if you give somebody like this, and there's still people out there still owing money, that they're going to come up here and ask for the same thing. And I hate saying it, you know, that was that time, everybody, there was a lot of people that did pay that assessment and everything, and I'm just a little concerned that if you do this and there's still people that hasn't done it, they might be back up here asking for the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Okay, anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Okay, there being none, the council is allowed by law to move into executive session to seek legal advice from the city attorney, and that's what we're going to do at this time. If you're looking at your agenda, you notice under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, it states to seek legal advice on assessment paving liens. We will move at this time, the time is 8:14, into executive session. The only thing that'll be discussed back there is legal advice from the attorney, and we'll come back out here to have a further discussion, and any decision made by the council will be made out here rather than back in the executive session. So the council is moving at this time into executive session, is authorized by this section of the Texas Government Code. Executive session is authorized by the chapter I decided earlier, is back in open session to discuss taking the action on this matter relating to item number seven on the agenda, the paving lien at 2613 and 2723 Weaver. Before we proceed any further, do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council regarding this matter before I ask for a motion from the council? Mr. Haskin?
Just thinking about it since, over the last 30 minutes or so, there was just a couple of things that I wanted to key on. Councilperson Lanford asked me if I felt like I was treated fair to the other property owners. And I basically answered it for the other three people that were assessed. And I think my whole thing here is, is that the, the 28 that were not, that theirs was waived. And there, I guess, is my whole argument is I don't believe I was treated equally to the other people. Exactly the same thing was asked of the other 28 landowners. If you donate this property, we will waive the assessments. I was asked literally in 1990 and later on, at 90 with Phil Patterson that was here, he goes, this is for the future expansion of Weaver Street. And back then, I was going like, can they start building it tomorrow? Because Weaver was such a fun street. And it was many years later. So literally, I was asked exactly the same thing. Donate this property for the expansion of the street. And my difference is, is a timing deal. So I guess maybe to more key on that question you asked me a while ago, is that I'm wanting to be treated exactly like the ones that donated a value to the city. And that's about the only other thing I wanted to add. So I don't know if that, I know it's a interesting one to try to figure out, but I guess I'm just wanting to be treated exactly for doing exactly the same thing as other people on that street.
Any questions by members of the council for Mr. Haskins? Okay, I believe not, Mr. Haskins.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wish to address the council on this matter? Okay, there being none, I am ready at this time to entertain a motion regarding the wishes of the council on item number seven to considerate, to give consideration and our action regarding paving lien on 2613 Weaver and 2723 Weaver. What is the pleasure of the council? Councilmember Lanford?
Thank you, Mayor White. This is indeed a very difficult issue. The, the issue of fairness over some span of time is, is what we have before us. And the, further, the issue of fairness to whom is, is a, is a question that we, we have to assess here. And in, in looking at that and thinking about that, personally, I cannot get beyond the fairness to the citizens of Halton City, the taxpayers of Halton City, and the city itself, and the enormous risk that we face if we allow a reversal of, of this assessment. There would be literally a, a run on the bank tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. I'm sure there'd be a number of people sitting right out of Tom's office, based squarely and solely on what I perceive to be my fiduciary duty and as a councilman representing the interest of all the citizens of Halton City, I move to deny the reversal of the assessment.
Okay, Councilmember Reese?
That would be for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny any discussion on the motion. There being none, if you'll register your vote, I will display it at this time. And that motion to deny passes by unanimous vote of the council. All other items on the agenda having been addressed, the council stands adjourned.